And sign the affidavit.
Oh, we have that for Tree Top?
Yes.
We have that.
They gave me, you signed the affidavit?
Yep.
They didn't get circulated?
Yeah, we usually don't always hand those out to you guys. I mean, you don't really need them, do they?
Well, we have one in our packet, but it's crossed out. It's not signed.
Yes, okay, yes, so that, all right, so you're original.
We should at least email around the revised when they come in so that the board has them so that they know they're good to go, that they've crossed all their boxes and TUCO.
All right, everyone ready?
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the August 2021 Town of Poughkeepsie Zoning Board of Appeals. If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the principles which stands where we stand in this world of inequality and justice.
We have one board member missing tonight, so Anthony Straka will be a voting member who's typically an alternate. For those of you unfamiliar with the procedure of the zoning board of appeals, there's an agenda that's available up here if you haven't taken one. We'll take each item as it appears on the agenda. Each applicant will come up and describe what their proposal is. All testimony before the zoning board of appeals is under oath. At the end of their presentation, oftentimes the board members will have questions of the applicant. Once that happens, the members of the public can make comments about the application. At that point, either the application will be adjourned to another meeting or closed. If the record is closed on that application, at the end of the agenda, after we've taken each of those items, we'll go into deliberations. At that point, no further comment is taken from the applicant or from the public. It will deliberate and vote. At that time, the applicant or the public can either wait until that time to determine what happens, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning. Okay, with that, I'd like to begin. Number one, on the agenda, I understand that the applicant has submitted a letter withdrawing their application, and so we'll take that off the agenda. Number two is Stewart's, and I understand that the applicant has requested an adjournment, so I'd make a motion to adjourn that application until the September 13th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Next is United Methodist Church. Is there someone there? Okay, come on up. You're still under oath. So you still have to tell the truth.
I will do so.
Okay. What's new?
I don't have anything new. I'm here to answer any more questions if anybody has some. I think Chrissy has something new, though.
So I think we have the final measurements correct?
Final measurements are correct. Now we're just waiting for new responses from the county.
Okay. So anybody have any questions of the applicant?
We still haven't heard from county?
No, she had some more questions for me today.
I'm sorry to bring you out if we-
No, it's okay. You know, I'm patient. We're patient.
Okay. Unfortunately, we can't act until the county gives us their review, so.
Yep, and I will help Chrissy try to answer some of their questions, so.
Okay.
Okay. Any member from the public who wishes to comment on this application? This is an application for an EMD sign in front of a church on New Hackensack Road. All right, no one in the audience? Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to comment on this application?
And if you're on Zoom, you can just unmute yourself or raise your hand if you'd like. Not seeing any.
All right, I don't, I don't see any comments, so I'd make a motion to adjourn this one to the September 13th meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that motion's carried. What did I say? Did I get it wrong again? September 13th, 2021?
Who seconded?
Who seconded?
Oh, who seconded?
It's a unit of month.
All right. That brings us to item four. 55 Hemmond Boulevard. Mr. Wilkinson, can you hear? There you go.
Yes, I'm here on Zoom.
All right, why don't you describe, well, first of all-
Mr. Wilkinson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Thank you.
All right, why don't you describe what you want to do?
Um, so directly off the back of my existing garage, I'm looking to put up a prefab carport on a concrete slab. In doing so, I would like to match up the center of the carport with the center of the existing garage. And in doing so, I would be approaching on the, the 10-foot setback from requesting the variance of a two-foot, variance of two feet, which will be an eight-foot setback. The existing garage does have a five-foot variance as well, so that is only a setback five feet off of the property line.
And this is a detached structure?
Yes, detached structure.
All right. And can you tell me how high the peak is about?
I'd approximately say about 12 feet is the peak.
All right, and that's lower than the garage peak. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. So probably, probably two feet lower than the peak of the garage.
All right, and I think you mentioned that this will be farther away from the side lot line than the garage is. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yes. It'll be three feet further away from the sideline than the existing garage.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Diane?
I just have one simple clarification. It says rear property line. It means side, right?
It's, I think that's a mistake. It should be the side.
Okay, just one. No questions.
Tony?
Uh, no questions.
All right, any from, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience. Is there anyone in the Zoom world that wishes to comment?
Not seeing anybody trying to unmute, so we're okay.
All right, I'm sorry, I just have one more question. The fence that's there on that property line, is that yours or your neighbor's?
Uh, there's actually both. There's a chain link fence that is mine, and then a six-foot tall wood fence that is my neighbor's.
Okay.
But they're brought up directly against each other.
Okay, very good. Then I don't have any further questions. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. You can either wait around, or you can call in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That brings us to item number five, 48 Tree Top Lane. Is there someone here from that application?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen.
Come on, go to the seat and speak into the microphone so we can make sure we hear you.
Yes, hello, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Would you state your name?
I'm sorry?
What's your name?
Uh, George Mungel.
All right, what's this application about?
Uh, the homeowner's looking to put a new deck in the rear of the house with a gable roof on top and a screened-in porch. Pretty simple.
Okay, when you say the rear of the house, you're talking about the side of the house that has the driveway on it?
Yes.
Okay. Is it going to extend past the house?
No, no. It, there was, on the original footprint of the house, this is what they called a port, a carport, which was actually being used as a deck, had handrails and everything all around it. So it was, it wasn't built very well, to say the least. So we removed this, put back the same exact size deck that there, was there originally, and a roof on top of it to close it in with screen.
Do you have any diagrams or architectural drawings of the-
Oh, I do, sir, but I don't have them with me. They're in my other truck. I, I did give them to the building department, though.
Okay. So- So you're looking for a variance that's going to go 5.32 feet from the property line?
I believe so, and I believe there were some representatives from the town at the job already.
Right.
I wasn't there with them, but they were there with the homeowner.
Okay. So along the driveway, there's a concrete or block-
There's a retention wall.
Retention wall?
Yes.
Are you going to extend past that?
No, sir.
Okay. So there were some holes dug into the ground? That's where you plan on-
Yes, that's where, that's where the new footings would go.
Okay, and those, those were the old, that's where the old footings were?
Yes, sir.
Represent the old footings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And how high will the roof be over top of this carport?
I'm gonna, it's kind of difficult without having a rafter in my hand.
Well, is it going to extend past the existing roof line?
No, sir. It's gonna, actually, there's a little bump out from the kitchen.
Right.
It's gonna go over the top of that and tie into the existing gable.
Okay.
And then frame down. For now, I would estimate it's going to be the top of it, which probably would be no lower than 10, no more than 12 or 13 high.
Okay. And is it fair to say the area that is, that's right next to this is all wooded?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, those are all the questions I have. Christine?
So when we were out there, it looks like it's going to be built at the end of the driveway. Is that correct?
Yes, that what I'm calling at the bottom of the driveway.
And it's going to be connected to the, to the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you looking at a plan right now? Because it's a little confusing, I know.
I'm, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. When you look at that plan and you see where you enter the garage doors, can you see that on there? Kind of go down the hill, you make a-
Oh, man.
This is the man?
Yeah, sure.
This is the existing thing that was, that's, that's there on this side of the house is the driveway coming down.
Right.
Okay, this is that retention wall we were just talking about.
Right.
And this is the existing carport that was there that was being used as a deck. You actually come in here and then you go into the garage and under the house this way.
Okay. So you're saying that, that was existing, that, that extended over the driveway?
That black area, yes. No, that's the carport. That's where the cars-
The carport received a variance.
I'm a little bit familiar with this because I'm-
You said the carport?
1991, yeah.
I'm a little bit familiar with this house, and I just don't remember that being there.
Carport received a variance. It was less, it was 9.68.
Right now, there is no carport, correct?
No, not anymore.
But you're saying there was one?
Yes.
And now they're asking for 14?
In that area, in that area right there.
And are you going to build another one?
I'm going to put a deck there, like on the original footprint of the, of the house. On the original footprint of the house, it's called a carport, and it's there. Then they were using it as a deck. It was there when the new homeowner had bought the house. It wasn't something that they put there. This is all, you know, what came with the home.
Right.
So now, after I'd done some other work for them, I've known them for years, I noticed that, I said, you know, this deck is really not safe. I wouldn't let anybody go up on there, you know, and they took my advice, to say the least. But yeah, it's not gonna, it's not going to supersede anything that you see there, and it's, it's not going to block anyone's view. It'll be, it'll, it'll be, you know, nice, pleasing to the eye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Art?
Not right now. Thank you.
Phyllis?
Yes.
No.
So, so how are you going to, I understand that the carport is going to serve two functions. You're going to park cars under it, and on the top, it's going to be a deck, right?
Yes, not anymore, ma'am. There's not going to be any more cars parked underneath it.
There's no cars parked under there anymore?
No.
Okay.
The stair, the new staircase is going to stop anyone from going under.
Okay. Is, you're going to screen in this porch?
I'm sorry?
You're going to screen in the porch?
Yes, yes.
How are you, is it going to be attached to the main house?
Yes.
How will the roof line attach to the house?
Okay, we're going to have to go up above where the roof raft is on, on the porch, and it, there's a little bump out for the kitchen there, and the new ridge beam is going to just go over the top of that, and we'll just frame two valleys in, and a gable and roof in. Nothing uncommon.
I have no further questions.
Yes, ma'am.
When, when did the existing carport come down?
About two months ago.
And just so I'm clear again, you're going to screen in the top of this structure?
Yes.
Not the bottom?
Yes.
Okay, but you're not going to use the bottom for a carport?
I don't think so, because the new staircase, that's, it's gonna, it's got a little sacrificial thing now. There's no more carport, just a staircase.
Okay. And once again, this is in the same spot as the existing structure?
Yes, yes, exactly. It's going to be exactly the same size, except there's going to be a roof on it.
Chrissy, what was the prior variance?
The prior variance said that it was for, they received a 9.68 foot variance, and today, I mean, he has down that it's 5.32 feet from the property line, so it would be a 14.8 foot variance today. I'm not sure with the discrepancy when it happened, why.
Did, did you do the measurements for the variance, for what, for the application?
Yeah, it comes out to be on the, the width, the length of the, of the house will finish up at 22 feet, and the width will be 15 foot, 10 inches. That was the original side of the existing.
So is this any closer to the side lot line than the original structure?
No, no.
So the original structure was granted, was supposed to be farther from the side lot line than, than what you're asking for?
Okay.
So how does that, how'd that difference come about?
Uh, I don't, I don't know. I mean, look, but the architects planned the measurements, and as far as this goes, if I'm causing confusion, I have to apologize. I've been in this business a long time, and I never had to do this. I always paid an expediter in the city to take care of it, you know? This is a first for me. But when you say the original-
The, the carport required, the original structure of the carport-
Okay.
Required a variance because it was too close. It encroached upon the side lot line.
Okay.
And so a variance was granted for, to be nine feet something from the side lot line.
All right, that would represent, that would be the retaining wall? The retaining wall, that's, that parallels the driveway?
I don't, well, that's even closer to the side lot line, so that's-
Okay.
That doesn't make any sense either.
All right.
So the measurement that, that you're looking for, did that come from the posts or the, where the floor for the deck porch would be?
That was the finished, that was the finished structure.
Okay.
It cantileaved over the, the last girder by about four or five inches, that's all.
Okay. And is that any different than the, the structure that came down?
Uh, no, no.
And so once again, the measurement to the side lot line, that's coming from the closest point to the side, you got lot line?
I'm just looking at the set of prints, you know, that the architect gave me.
You don't have the prints with you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm getting very confused here.
Yeah.
What would be the odds of doing what we have done in the past, is scheduling an appointment, going out there and seeing this thing in real life, and getting a true understanding of what's going on, because I am very confused. You know, there's, it's showing, and again, excuse me, but it's showing the dark areas, it's showing where the new deck is going to go, which is much further than that wraparound deck that's there.
And this plan is-
The wraparound deck is, is still there, and it's not going to be, you know, altered other than new decking and handrails put on it.
Again, this is just me, but I have a real problem understanding this, which is-
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see the building plans, or have an opportunity for you to explain the building plans if we can't understand those either.
I'd be willing to go out on a special meeting today if we had to, just to keep this thing moving for them. And we've done this in the past, and again, I apologize, but I'm just at a loss here.
Is it possible to get a copy of the, the plans from the building department?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, well, Tony, do you have any questions?
No, I think that would help a lot.
Diane?
I agree, that would help.
Tony?
Well, I, I agree with Art that a site visit would be helpful. I mean, you're talking, you're saying you, you're looking to do a carport without a car, basically, right?
No, I'm, I'm sorry about that, that's-
I think that there was a carport there.
Yeah. Existing, right.
He tore it down and wants to build a new structure in the same area.
Okay.
The use, the fact that it's not going to be a carport is not dispositive of anything, I don't think, but where it actually is going to be is, what's that?
My thinking is that the carport was granted the variance, and then it was put in the wrong spot back in 1991. That's what I'm thinking.
How could that be?
But-
I mean, if it's a matter of a, a foot or two, I, you know, these folks are very easy to work with.
This is the same plot plan that was submitted with the building permit application, right?
I'm sorry, Chrissy?
This was the same plot plan that was submitted with the building department?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask you this. The architectural drawings, are they sufficiently clear enough to show, do they show the, the lot lines and, and everything, or is it just-
I, I believe so. Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. Then I think that the consensus of the board is that we'd like to adjourn this so we can get some more information.
Okay.
All right. I noticed that you've been doing some building there, and some, you know, you tore down stuff, and it's quite clearly ready to be doing building, so.
Yeah. I had to repair one of the existing footings.
Okay, but you don't have a-
Whatever, whatever we got to do, we got to do, you know?
All right. So before we adjourn, though, is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anybody in the audience. Anyone on, in Zoom? All right, I don't see anything there. And I'd like you to confer with, with our zoning administrator about a day that's convenient to you and to most of the members of the board, to have another site visit where you can explain exactly.
Whenever you're ready. I'm ready.
Then in that case, I make a motion to adjourn to the September 13th.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that carries. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. The next step, should I call Chrissy?
Yeah, call me.
Have a good night, everyone.
You, too. Thank you.
That brings us to number six, 49 Oakdale. Is there someone here from that application? Come on in. Why don't you state your names?
Uh, Anila Baker.
Mikisha Baker.
Okay, and make sure you speak into the microphone so we get it on, on the record.
Mr. and Mrs. Baker, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you describe what you want to do?
Yeah, I, I want to build a dormer in the front of my house, so put a space study, so my kids could study, and bring the front suffix out flush to a jog that's in the front of the, the house where the foundation jogged in. So I just want to make my suffix flush, go straight across, and just cantilever it, and put a post to hold up the dormer.
Okay. So this won't extend any closer to the front line or the sideline than the existing?
No, it won't. Actually, it will, it will come in two feet, two feet, six inches off each side. If you look at the print, it will show you where it come in, two feet, six inches off the existing roof that's there.
Okay. And so I see that you have some, some plans. Did you, were those, were they submitted to the zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Is it something different than, than this?
Just the, the architectural plans.
This is all we have in our pocket? Is that, that's what that is?
That's for a plot plan, yes.
Well. Yeah. All right.
I mean, it's just filling in the space.
Okay. All right, that's all, that's all I have?
On each end?
Yes, yep, it's filling in this space. So it's going to be flush with the front, and then flush with the side. But what he's saying, two feet, I, I don't, I don't see where that is.
It's just off the extent, the existing roof, where, where it goes up.
Okay, so it's an overhang?
Yeah, I'm just going to come in two feet off the, off the overhang. So the wall doesn't sit on the actual suffix itself that goes up.
Okay.
All right, can I have any more questions? Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony?
Diane, no questions.
All right. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, there's nobody in the audience. Anyone on Zoom?
There's only two people on Zoom who we haven't heard from. No?
All right. Hearing nothing, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. Thank you. You can either wait for a little while, or, or you can find out in the morning.
Okay, thank you, we'll wait.
Thank you, we'll wait.
Next on the agenda is number seven, 10 Sparrow Lane.
Evening.
All right, why don't you state your name?
My name's Robert Richardson.
Okay.
Mr. Richardson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe what your project is?
Basically, I'm here, I inherited my parents' house in November of last year, and it has an existing carport there. It's been there probably 35 to 40-plus years. It's not, it's, it's covered in the same siding as the house, so it's not any eyesore detriment. I'm looking for a variance, variance to the property line. It's, it's, right now, it's exactly four feet from the property line. I do know, back in the day, we were one of the first houses in that development, and my parents became friends with the neighbors on that particular side real quick, and they had verbal permission to put it, you know, where they did. And it's been existing, like I said, for so long time, so I plan to sell the house, but I mean, I'm hoping not to tear the thing down. I don't know what options I have other than the variance. At least it is existing. It's something that fell into my lap. The inspector came, looked at it, said it was built very well. All I got to do is put a few nails in the sides of the joists and the hangers, and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
And I know that, the, I'm, I'm quite sure that the rules and regulations back, way back then are a little different than they are today. Like I see, he said something about 20 feet from the side, and I don't think you'll find a house in that entire development that has 20 feet from the side of the foundation to the property line, so I don't know, so.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Diane?
No. No questions.
Tony?
And no questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? There's no one in the audience. Anyone on Zoom? I don't, no one's really responding, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just that it's very well screened, and that makes it a little more appealing to the eye for the neighbors, I think. I don't think they can see it, right, with the screening between them and the carport.
Yeah. Okay, then, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
All right, that, that motion's carried. You can either wait or find out in the morning.
All right, thank you. I haven't seen anything.
Okay. That brings us to number eight, 3532 North Road. Is there someone here from that application?
Anyone on Zoom for?
I'm here. I'm Michelle Lee. I'm representing Action Sign Corp.
Okay.
That's the sign company that's handling this for the order.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Hello, hello?
Can you hear us?
Can you hear, can you hear, can you hear us?
Hello?
Hello, do you hear?
Hello, hello?
Hello, hello.
Do you hear us? Hello?
Hello?
I guess not. That's unfortunate.
Okay, can you guys not hear me?
We hear you. We hear you. Do you hear us? We hear you. We hear you. Do you hear us? I'd give you the thumbs up, so we hear you.
Hi, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay, hi. So I'm Michelle Lee. I'm here for Action Signs.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, why don't you describe the project?
Okay, so this is an existing Chipotle, and they have signs on the building, but the owner is requesting a third wall sign that'll be facing Route 9, North Road. And the sign is two foot, four quarter inches high, and then 12 foot, five eighths inches wide, which is, you know, a standard wall illuminated, internally illuminated sign with gentle letters and a pepper logo. It's, you know, it'll be in the colors, that is the store brand colors, and look at, like, if there are other existing marketing in what they have on the building.
So, how many signs are you proposing?
Well, this, this is one additional sign, so this is the third sign.
So, just so I'm clear, this building isn't completed yet. There aren't any signs on the building.
There's two that I believe you've already approved.
I approved two on the plans, but the building is still under construction.
Okay.
Yep.
So...
Yes, at the main entrance.
So where is the third one? So what's it gone?
The third is going to be facing Route 9, and it's on the other side of the building, on the North Road side of the building.
Where are the two that were approved? Over the entrances, probably.
Over the front entrances. The code for the HRDD district is a little different than the other sign laws. For the HRDD district, only one wall sign per public business entrance is allowed.
So why do they have two?
So the entrance is facing Shopright?
Winslow Gate Road, yes.
Yep.
But they have two.
Shopright, okay.
There's two entrances, I guess, if there's two signs, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so one...
So one on Winslow Gate and one on Shopright side.
No, well, the Shopright side is Winslow Gate.
Okay.
Because the road, Winslow Gate curves around.
Oh, okay.
And then I would think the other entrance would be the one that is facing where the outdoor dining is shown on there, which is facing another building, which will be a CBS at some point.
It's going to be facing north, then?
It'll be facing north, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's right, thank you.
That's better. Thanks.
Yep.
Sorry.
There's an entrance on the north?
There's an entrance on the north side of the building and an entrance on the east side of the building. This is asking for a sign on the third, on the west side of the building, which is the side facing North Road, Route 9.
Yes.
Right, near the, near the free standing sign, right.
Okay. We are also still waiting for a response from the county on this.
Oh, right, yeah, we haven't gotten a county recommendation on this.
All right, then, you're going to be, you're going to have a sign on the pylon?
Yeah.
That's four signs.
Okay. Will there be any directional signs inside the project for, how to be able to find it if you can't see all the signs?
Not going to worry about it. Like, are you talking about arrow signs or signs that are off, that are on the North Road side of the sidewalk? What do you mean, asking that directional signage?
There will, there will be some of that kind of signage on the project. I don't know if Chipotle will have one of those signs. They may be reserved for larger tenants, but I don't know for sure. There will be, when you come up Winslow Gate Drive from Route 9, the road curves around right about where you would go back to the Shopright. And so at that point, you would be facing the east side of the building, which is the side of the building where the entrance is and where there is a sign already approved.
Okay. All right, then, I don't have any, I do, how does this sign size compare to the approved signs?
I believe it's the same.
I don't have copy of the approved signs. I know this will make a sign, but I think it's probably standard, right?
Yeah, I believe it's the same size.
Same size?
And the covers are the same, you know, their marketing logo, the illuminations, the same cutouts.
All right, that's all I have at this time. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
Okay, I'm going to mute myself, okay?
Okay.
What, why do they, excuse me, why do they think they need this fourth sign?
Third.
So, so this is the third building sign, and I don't think they're looking at it as a fourth sign. I think they're thinking visibility from North Road and this wall sign will face Route 9. So it must have to do with, I'm not familiar with Kipsey, and I apologize for that, but I'm representing Action, and it must have to do with traffic flow and visibility.
Okay, thank you.
Phyllis?
So you're not, you are going to have a sign on the pedestal sign? Yes? Hello?
I'm not sure, Beth. I'm here to talk about the third wall sign that they're requesting. I don't know if that's ever been approved for this business.
All right, the zoning administrator is indicating for the record that they're planning on having a sign on the pedestal.
So I, I'm confused as to the importance of this sign not far from the pedestal sign. They're both visible at the same time.
Okay, so is the pedestal sign, isn't it stacked with a bunch of other, didn't you just say there was a large, larger business that's going in and CBS is going in? Is your pedestal sign covering all of these businesses?
Yes.
Okay, so what Chipotle is asking for is a sign that is isolated only to them on their building facing that North Road traffic. And it's 100% about visibility. So if you're driving by, you're reading a stack sign or you're just literally saying, oh, there's the building, there's Chipotle?
Tell me this, do you know the...
Right, it's an illuminated sign.
Do you know the difference in elevation between where the sign will be and Route 9?
No, I do not. It's on the building. I'm not sure, I've worked through setback, where is it on the building? So I'm looking at, they gave me floors, areas, shop, shops and areas of the parking area and then the, an area like the neighbor of the roadway. And it is, there's a lot of trees and stuff. I don't know how much of that has been cleared out or planned to be cleared out. But my understanding of this meeting is that they had already been approved for some signage, and this meeting was to discuss that third sign.
Correct.
Which is on the building.
Right.
So from the roadway, is that building visible? You know, are the rest of those shops up and visible yet, or they're coming?
They're under construction.
Yeah.
All right, was there anything else, Phyllis?
No, thank you.
Tony?
No, I don't have any questions.
Diane?
No questions.
And Tony?
Uh, no questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Okay, I'm going to mute myself. I really don't have a hard time on hearings, so I just want to make sure we're good. I'm going to mute myself.
All right. Anyone else on Zoom? Who wishes to comment on this application? All right, seeing nothing. I, I'll note that we have to wait for the county's response to this application, so unfortunately we have to adjourn this. I'll make a motion to adjourn this to the September 13th meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion's carried. Thank you. Yes.
She didn't reply, I just understand what...
Are you, Ms. Monica? Are you still there?
No, I thought, no.
No.
Ms. Monica, are you still there?
I am here.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn this to the September 13th meeting to wait, to await a response from the county?
No, we understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item nine. Route 9D, South Hills Mall?
It's South Hills Commons.
It's South Hills Commons.
It's a proposed, the four, four-building apartment complex, 24 units.
What's your name?
Why don't you state your name?
Sorry, Amy Bomberdery with D. Stokosa.
Ms. Bomberdery, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe this project?
So it's, it's a four-building apartment development with 24 units total. They're all two bedrooms. It was recently rezoned to the RMF district in July, so the frontage is three feet under 200, and the minimum lot width is also a hair under what the required width is. So they're technically pre-existing nonconformances, so we're looking for a variance for those two distances.
Okay. Will you be requiring any other variances with the project?
No.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
So this is not going to be part of the mall, per se, it's going to be on that lot down along 9D?
It's on 9D, across from the cemetery.
Cemetery.
Yeah, it's got, it's not even adjacent to the South Hills property.
Thank you.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tom?
No questions.
Diane?
I have one question. I don't even know if this is really a zoning issue, but I would love some clarity on it. It mentions in your paperwork that there may be the need for a left turn lane to be put on 9D, and do you, how, do you see that that's a likelihood coming up in order to facilitate this size complex?
I don't, I don't think it is. We're still working with the DOT, so ultimately they will make the decision, but I don't believe the traffic report, I think, you know, we're on the margin, so, does that sound...
Yeah, I would agree with that, too. And it's a DOT, New York State DOT issue as to whether they would require the town, and I don't think the planning board would require it. The planning board seems satisfied with the traffic as such for the 24 units, but it's ultimately a DOT decision.
Yep. It still requires a site plan review, so the planning board has, there's been several iterations of the site plan and some changes, you know, that, based on the planning board's discussion. The planning board did issue a negative declaration for secret purposes. When was that? In May, May 20th? And then the zoning, and then it went to the town board for the zoning change in July. So it's got to go back to the planning board that this, these variances were necessary before...
They can, okay.
Tony?
Nothing further.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, anyone from Zoom that wishes to comment? All right, I don't, I don't...
Someone on the Zoom looks like they're trying to unmute or anything, no?
All right, in that case, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. So let's bring us to item number four, 55 Hemmon. You can stay or find out in the morning, but this one, this probably won't take long.
Probably not. It's up to you. You can, or you can choose to leave and call in the morning.
So this brings us to 55 Henman Boulevard. This is an application for two-foot variance for side lot line for a carport. It's within, actually, it's farther away from the side lot than the existing garage. It's, it's pretty much screened by a fence, so I don't see any real impact. Does anybody have any real concerns with it? All right, then I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, it is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. I don't see that to have any impact on the, on any nearby properties based upon the existing screening. And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, this is the only way for the applicant to achieve his desired result. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically, it's, it's not particularly large, and in fact, it has less of an impact than the existing garage. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, there, there will be no physical or environmental impacts on the district. And whether the difficulty was self-created, which it certainly was, but that's not a reason in this case to deny the application. And I would offer those findings.
Second.
Okay, so Christine, do you mind making a motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, so move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, that motion carries. That brings us to item number five.
Adjourned.
What's that?
That was adjourned.
Oh, that one was adjourned. That brings us to... Write that, 13. So that brings us to item number six, 49 Oakdale. So this is a, an application for, for four-foot side yard variance of 16 feet for, for an addition. So, anybody have any concerns about this one? All right, so even, well, this is really just squaring off the front and, and bringing, it really doesn't, it's no closer to the, to the front or to the side yard than the existing building. So I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, this proposal is consistent with the neighborhood and fits into the character of the neighborhood and will have no impact. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, based upon the existing placement of the, of the house, there's no way to make any addition even within the confines of that without, without a variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's not particularly either mathematically or practically substantial. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no impact either environmentally or physically on the conditions in the neighborhood. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason in this case to deny the application. I would offer those findings.
Mr. Chair, for number three, it's a 16-foot variance as opposed to a four-foot variance, so I think it would be...
Oh, yes, it's 16-foot. So it is mathematically substantial, but not practically.
Thank you.
Okay, I, so I'd offer those. Anybody want to add anything? Then Art, do you mind making a motion?
Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item six?
Six.
Yep, six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts these findings, those set forth by the chair, so move.
All right, any discussion?
Second.
All right, any discussion now? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. That brings us to number seven, 10 Sparrow Lane. This is a... So this is a request for 16, 16-foot variance for an existing carport garage. Any, any comments on this? Anybody have any concern about this? Okay. Then I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting... Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. The applicant indicated that this carport garage has existed for more than thirty-five years. It's consistent with the neighborhood based upon the small lots in the neighborhood. It's, it's, there's no other, well, it's consistent with the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, there's no other method to achieve the desired results other than an area variance. Whether the proposed area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, however, based upon the, the layout of the house and the existing lot lines, it's practically, has, has little impact. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there should be no environmental or physical impact on the neighborhood. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of reported appeals. It certainly was, but, and that's not a reason to deny it in this case, and I would offer those findings.
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody want to add anything to that? Tony, do you mind making a motion?
I move that the board approve the area variance request for item, set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. That brings us to item number nine. Route Nine D. This is a request for a variance of two-point-oh-three feet and seven-point-four feet for lot width lines. Anybody have any concerns about this one? Then I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. All this appears to be, well, this is consistent with the neighborhood and will have no impact on, or a detriment to nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. There's no other method for the applicant to secure what they want to do. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it's certainly not. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there'll be no environmental or physical impact on the, on the neighborhood or district. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it was, but in this case, that's not a reason to deny it, and I would offer those findings.
Second. Second.
Okay, and, Tony, do you mind making this motion?
Uh, okay, sure. All right, make a motion, move to approve the request for the, for the two variances sought in item number nine. This is based on the, the application itself, the testimony at the public hearing, the findings of the chair, and, and the minimal impact that, that this would make in terms of lot sizes. So for all the above reasons, I move to that we approve both, both of the requested variances.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this? All right, then all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. There's nothing else on the agenda, so I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
If there was a clock, then we'd know what time it was.